And again, taking into account daytime spending, people we don't track, I think that number is significantly higher of what the role tourism plays. So my question is, you know, and I say this kind of tongue in cheek, who turns 1.1 million dollars into 37.5 million dollars? Tourism does, you know, it's an investment fund, you know, and you don't draw from your principal. That's just not smart finance, you know, and that's what I feel like this proposal is talking about here is taking that investment, limiting the amount that we can invest and put back into the community to turn it into more money for you guys. So how do we turn that into, and so I want to talk about, when I first got into tourism, it was destination marketing organization. But what happens is, is that if you market a community while it's deteriorating, you can say, hey, we're a diamond, but when they get there and you're presenting coal, you know, you don't get the repeat visitors. So a lot of the push in tourism over the last 10 years, again, was to kind of follow that original suit of reinvesting it back into the community, the people that are making the experiences for the visitors that are coming out here. Visitors come for all reasons, to stay in Ely, you know, and that's countywide right there. So that's the approach that we kind of took. So I'm going to read through, and this by no means is all the organizations that we worked with in the last year that tourism money was either directly invested into through the grants program or through marketing that we did for them or any kind of support. But you've got the White Pine Rodders, the Great Basin Service Club, multiple, for multiple events, but fireworks for 4th of July, we branded that one. The Rotary Club, the White Pine Chamber, but particularly the concert at the lake, if you guys enjoyed that, tourism money went to paying for the buses, paying for the insurance, paying for bands. Okay, that event couldn't have happened without tourism money. Stepto Valley Trap and Ski, and just heard all the events that are going on out there. Again, county facility, bringing money into the city of Ely. White Pine Junior High School Rodeo, White Pine Ranch Rodeo, Nevada Landscape Coalition Shellboard, Re Riders, Great Basin Trails Alliance, Bristol Cone Bowman, White Pine County Horse Races, Ag District 13, the Community Choir, the Lund Rodeo, the Golf Course, Nevada Northern Railway, Ely Outdoor Enthusiasts, the Shoshone Tribe, the Public Museum has benefited greatly from tourism the last year. The Ely Renaissance Society, particularly all those murals that are getting refurbished and about to get refurbished, that's tourism money. The Cash Program, Arts in the Park, Children's Art Festival, Sagebrush Quilters Guild, UNR Cooperative Extension, and the High Desert Trailblazers, just to name a few. From a marketing standpoint, in the last year, we've got a new visitors guide, a brand-new website that showcases thousands, you know, our new images. We've probably gotten about, I would say, over a thousand new images of White Pine County between our efforts, Travel Nevada's efforts, and people that we've contracted with that have submitted. We're active daily on four social media platforms, Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, and YouTube. We use local contractors and designers to design 33 posters for local events, four brochures, five postcards, three of which were mailers, three banners, 10 print ads, two wrap cards, 14 other documents like logos, tickets, gift certificates, things like that. We did the top 10 brochure and poster that you see in all the windows around town. Six new professionally-produced promotional videos promoting Ely as a year-round destination. Eight, and a whole bunch of amateur GoPro videos that I've done too. Eight targeted digital campaigns, and again, this is the new technology that's available to you where I don't have to go out into the world to see people face-to-face, I can reach them digitally. Eight targeted campaigns that have reached almost 3 million people, individuals, in our target market just in the last year, you know, for the same price as some of the past marketing campaigns. 50-plus targeted social media promotions. I've received and administered eight grants to Travel Nevada in this last year. I've helped two other groups administer their grants, put on three concerts, two of which were fundraisers for arts and local food banks. And then we also put on three events, Race the Rails, Fire and Ice, more than three, the 4th of July breakfast, and then the Christmas breakfast as well. Upcoming capital improvements because we're trying to invest into the convention center, which again, has seen a major increase in events. We're doing the Lions High Street Parking Lot remodel that we're responsible for. That's that strip between the jailhouse and the 4-7s. It's going to look amazing, ADA accessibility, landscaping. Most importantly, it's going to be safe and it's going to look good for our visitors that are coming in. We're doing an ADA bathroom remodel, and bathrooms in the back, which we've been made aware of, that are not fully ADA accessible, so we're working on that to comply. We're doing a White Pine room remodel, which is also the look and the technology to try to bring more small events or more small meetings in that need particular technology, like screen casting, conference calls, and things like that. And we're also doing a countywide facilities guide, which includes all of your parks and what your facilities are and contacts, so that when people come and they want to do a car show or, you know, whatever, they see all the facilities that are available, not just the convention center, big, small, indoor, outdoor. So commenting on the proposal as it is, you know, not only do I think the way that it's worded right now, it's not exactly following the intention of what room tax was set for. You know, it's a stretch saying that tourists use the roads, you know, but visitors have experiences, and it's our museums, it's our events, it's our history, it's our arts, it's our outdoor recreation that people are coming for. You know, and again, that's the investment that we're making that hopefully gets them to come back over and over again, leave more money, open up more businesses, leave more money, and then eventually just move the families out here and join the community. So I know city, every city doesn't have enough money, I mean, I get it, you know, I understand. So what I want to leave you guys with is a couple of opportunities that I've come up with that we could partner within Parks and Rec and things like that, that I think would be very impactful and very beneficial, not just to the local community, but perpetuating tourism as well. And having a conversation with somebody they had asked, is that 0.5% that you administer, does that just go back to city facilities? Or should that just go back to city facilities? I don't think it should, because people come for everything that's going on in the entire county. And I think it's a great position that the city really recognized that when they passed the ordinance, that this was to drive more tourism, not just go into the general fund. So here's some thoughts, Broadbed Park is a huge name for me. I'm glad to hear that there's a master planning session kind of coming in. But I think designating that as the city's trailhead, putting up maps and putting up industrial tools, like they've got these essentially bike tool parks and stuff like that that you can set up. People get, people park there, they're in the downtown, they go do their ride, whether it's a road ride at the canyon or something of six or ice plant, they come back into downtown, they're right there. People in the local community can fix their bikes, it brings people down to the park. I think doing a walking path on the old tracks connecting the museum and the train yard would be a huge tourist draw, and I think that would be something cool that would be fun to work on with you guys. Of course, we've got the armory right here, and I think any indoor recreation facility that you put in the armory could be fully supported, especially if it was able to bring in tournaments, high school, state tournaments, things like that, wrestling, basketball, volleyball, those put heads and deaths, you know, but consider indoor mini putt-putt too, just personal. Caliente put an amazing bike park in their downtown park. I think Stepto or some of your other parks have the topography to put in a bike park, pump track, jump line, like Caliente, it would certainly benefit, you know, more kids on bikes, getting them out, fighting obesity, things like that. I'd love to do a mural on any city-owned building at no cost to you guys. I have an arts budget, you know, and that's what we're doing all of the mural refreshings with. But if there's a city-owned building that needs to be spiced up, let's put a mural on it, you know? I would love to have you guys abandon the end of Sixth Street, just above the convention center, that were weeds and trees and, it's just really kind of a horrible entry for people who come into the conventions, they look up and they see trash weeds and then graffiti on that back wall right there. I mean, I would love to like turn that into a staircase or a ramp that leads up to that road that gives people access to the Renaissance Village. Because right now, how do you send people to the Renaissance Village? They've got to hike up the hill like this, you know? So let's work on providing a really cool experience, landscape, get some interpretive signs up there and pop them right up. It'd be great for the convention center. And then I think Broadbed Park could host a three-hole disc golf course, too. We've got a great disc golf course up on Ward Mountain, people travel for that. It's covered in snow in the wintertime. Disc golf is great for multi-generational groups, from kids to seniors. It's low cost to get into, it's low impact. And so I think putting something around the perimeter of Broadbed Park gets more kids and people, and we could program lessons and things like that down there. Again, I have a special interest in Broadbed, so, but I think there's great opportunities to partner, and I think working together on things is really how we're going to move the city forward into reaching these long-term economic goals. So I would hope that maybe we can understand the ordinances as they currently are and give greater understanding of what just finished and has settled before it's stirring up the pot of the water. Do you guys have any questions for me?
No, but I thank you for coming in and giving us an update on all the things that we're experiencing.
Wow, thank you. Thanks for being on the show.
I'd like to thank Kyle, too, I asked him to come tonight because I've only been on the tour record for one meeting, so I didn't know the ins and outs of the money and the taxes with how all people and, you know, I really, I'm a big supporter of the outlaw intent, because I really am, and I think that's what we need to help grow Ely, I really do. And it's working so far, Kyle's proven himself and showing that he's invested this money wisely to groups that are going to take the ball and run with it, so, thanks for coming tonight, thank you.
I heard you going to the next slide and I'd like to ask Kyle a couple of questions. So when did you go for the next agenda? Can you tell me what your ending balance was when you took over the convention center? Or did the administrative system of the convention center?
Okay, if I understand that correctly, so what was the ending balance? Would that be the amount of money that was in savings?
Thank you, Pat, when you started your position.
My budget was right after-
What was your ending balance?
How much money did you have on tap, is what I'm asking. So we finished this year with surplus.
I'm not asking for this year, I'm asking who started.
Well, when we started, there was a surplus as well. The former director did a great job of stashing away money for future capital improvement projects. And as I know right now, there's probably about $800,000 that he saved for a major capital improvement project with the convention center.
On December, the date of December of the year 2015, when I was removed from the board, we left over a million dollars in that settlement for the purpose of expanding the convention center because we couldn't accommodate the convention center too small. Okay, I listened to the whole program, the proposal, the conference, and I made it worth it all, and I'm committed with your advice. Also, I would like to know what your ending balance was as of June 30th of this year?
About $900,000, because I thought I finished-
$900,000, you should have been a little-
Well, before, I mean, before I got here, the board took a draw of $250,000 for the capital improvement projects like the ADA and the parking lot remodel that we are moving forward on. That was a decision that was made before I got here. And so with my recommendation this year, I did not advise to take money out of our capital fund, so essentially not drawing from savings and making our budget work with the money that we were bringing in. But we did also increase the grant program too.
Okay, I will ask anything else to the next one.
All right, thank you.
I should have agreed up.
Any other questions or discussion on this item? Thanks for your time, Kyle.
Thank you.
We'll move on to item number four, Councilman Flankis' discussion for possible action, approval of First Reading Ordinance 7 through 6, Bill Number 2019-09 on ordinance-amending city code Title III, Chapter III rental businesses, changing the half a percent room tax from being dedicated for use for outdoor activities to being placed in the city's general fund for the sole purpose of additional funding dedicated to the city of Ely Parks and Recreation Department and/or the cemetery, increasing the half a percent to 1% of gross room tax revenue beginning July 1st, 2020, dedicating 2.5% of the gross room tax revenue to be used specifically for the city of Ely Road Department, effective July 1st, 2020. I will entertain motion on this item.
I will tell you-
Do I have a second?
I think we need to discuss it, so I'll second it.
Yes, I will open it up for discussion. Ernie, do you have something to add?
I have a question, you wrote this.
This was contacted from the one that wrote it back a few years ago when it was through act. I, I just, and it was revised, but the thing is, we apply it only next Saturday.
By Chuck?
Yes.
I kind of have heartburn about that, really honestly, because the council as a whole did not instruct our old attorney to write this.
I asked you.
But I don't think you have that right.
Why?
As a council as a whole, he's not your personal attorney.
I was writing today, so we can resume, doesn't mean you have to take action.
I think it's done legally, he wasn't instructed to do it by this council.
Oh, and if you were to drop the item completely, go ahead, I mean, it's a loss to the city. As an example for you right now, like 1% that's just put in there, was put in there specifically for half of that 1% to go to the county and the other half goes in the city to support to their community. Just a great grant, how much would you receive?
This year? This year?
How many?
Two hundred eighty-eight thousand.
Is that what?
That's the check that we represent the city with, two hundred eighty-eight thousand.
This year? I got, I know when we quit, it was great we didn't do it.
Right, and I'll be happy to address that.
Well, I think we're talking about a different issue here. That money that comes in from-
Well, I'm sure you may be wrong on that.
Sure, I understand, but that money that comes in from tour, where does that go first?
It went currently into the capital improvement fund. And I'm going to advise you now, I don't want to get in the general fund, Ernie. I kind of have a little bit of heartburn that I wasn't even included in this item on the finance side, and couldn't look at it and give you my opinion on where this money, if we were even to get, I just, I wasn't involved in it and I don't agree with it. I don't totally understand what you put in here. And there is reasons why I don't want to get in the general fund. I still believe this money needs to go into the capital improvement fund, where it was intended to go toward improvements.
Now, let me ask you a question, since you're a lawyer. Taxation-wise, how much do we receive on adult tax?
The city of-
How much?
You can ask me these questions right now, because I don't know. I don't know off the top of my head, and I don't have my finances here. And I've been busy trying to get things in order, so I haven't even had a real good chance. I've looked at the budget for this current year, and I guess there's going to be some recommendations I might give to change it, but that's to come.
I'd like to give some support to the treasurer. I'm against this ordinance the way it is, that whoever wrote that one, they said to put the money in the general fund. That's a darn insane, that came before the board, when I was just a citizen. A hundred forty-four thousand, well, somebody had a capital, a hundred forty-four thousand dollar budget, the county's going to get 27,800.
No, wait a minute. You might ask, you might ask for a city clerk to accept that.
Okay.
If this was to go where this money is incorporated as indicated, would have to be deposited in the general fund and in an account, all of those three things.
It doesn't, according to the contract, it would be revenue, that we would have to give 27% of it to the county under the police protection.
Well, you made the necessary permission.
He didn't ask me, not anything, you asked, you told me what you wanted, and I was listening. And to be honest with you, I looked, because if I went and I pulled the contract and I looked, it would not be excluded. And this is why I think it needs to stay in the capital improvement fund, because that's what the intent, the way I agreed the intent for the room tax that was put in place that before it was for.
So what did I, I'd like to continue on with the treasurer. She's getting these financial, we're completely running amok in the financials for the last six years. She's got a table full, trying to figure out what's going on. This is a good example, if this hadn't been caught, or even the 288,357.66 that matched up with Kyle presented to us, how much did the county get? I mean, it goes into this writing, and I'm sure like Councilman Carson said, it's all copied and pasted. One sentence in there that authorizes the city council to determine how to disperse the funds received from transalogy taxes. If it goes into a capital improvement fund, the department heads can come and make a recommendation during the budget process. At that time, we have an idea, what's a thought pattern to it, where the money needs to go, and which way to run, to do the whole thing. As for the road tax money, we started a program with the county, and I can't see taking anything out of what the public council is doing right now to assist the city's road fund. The city streets are so far, millions of dollars behind. When you look at that money, the county gets, right, $2 million in fuel tax, gas tax. The city gets $171,000, not even enough to pay the wages. So now we're doing partnership with the county on road projects. We need to sit down with the city council and the commission and try to get to a cooperation. 250,000 dollars, how far of that will take us? It's still fuel tax money, but the county got to ensure, we're never going to get hardly over 52 miles or over, it's all based on that. It's going to take partnership with the county and that. This amount of money here, to take this and to try to fix the road with it, it better use to support all the organizations, bringing people in and staying in our rooms. That's room taxes, none of us sitting here, anything, this is free money from tourists coming in. We've got to look at it like that. We've got to, I like that. What do we spend the 288,357 dollars on, you know what I mean?
Actually, your general improvement fund is looking quite well, but-
Okay, and that's where we sit down and make a logical plan, a budgeting process, just not throw it here and throw it there, because I think, look, we need to run this like a business, like I said, and that's the only way to do it. We can't put in the general fund, I mean, we can't give the county any more money just because we've got a foolish contract that allows that. End of story for me.
And for quite a clarification, too, that 2.5% of that money that we are saving, it was always our intention for the Main Street project, so we can pay for the water, sewer, utilities on that in full when the project is done.
Thank you.
Well, I just wanted to bring to your attention, the council was, I guess, you know, there's lots of capital, you know, potential capital improvement projects for parks and the cemetery. So if those were brought forward and costs were estimated, then the council could look at those. So it doesn't mean, because money's going in that fund, that the parks and cemetery can't be improved.
Would something, for example, like finishing Jack Gable Park, be a part of the capital improvements fund?
Before we go on that, on that one, you had that step on the treasurer.
Well, the capital improvement fund was, my understanding was put in place to support basically your general fund, any of them except the enterprise funds, any of your funds, to help do the capital projects and big expense items that can be capitalized as assets. I know there was some thought about, well, you know, this room tax should be used to help maintain these capital projects, that's not what it was meant for. It was meant to build them, to maintain them, that's your job, you know, as it goes along. But that's not the way I read it, that this room tax was meant to be, it was meant to get these projects built and put in place to bring for the community and the parks.
So for clarification, what you're saying, if I understand you right, planning is needed, if you're going to implement a project, there it is, now you've got to maintain it. So how are you going to maintain it? So the people who present a project better have a plan to put the management into, maintain it. Just don't throw it out there, you know, as you say, okay, what do we do now, turn it into a weed patch? That's what you say, we need to put a project-
And there just needs, there needs to be a whole lot more thought process put into it before we do it. And it's going to depend on the budgeting process, too, you already got your budget in place. It's, you're looking forward now, and that process is starting to change.
Does anybody else have anything they'd like to say on this item?
I'd like to ask kind of a question.
Sorry.
You say you're working on the promotion of bringing people in and this and that. I would have to mention the Polar Express territory. Two weeks ago, not tomorrow, I was in Kingston for a Polar Express committee meeting. In April, I was in Cold Springs for a Polar Express committee meeting with the state tourism. You were not in the room.
You are right.
Why?
Well, the last one in Kingston, I was picking my daughter up from her mom so I could bring her back to start the school year. And the one in April, well, I mean, to drive three hours, to drive six hours when I've got work to do, I interact with travel and that on a daily basis, they call me, send people out here. We've received, we've received grants, we've received grants that have been administered, so, I'm on great work, Polar Express territory and Travel Nevada, it's not necessary for me to be there, but mainly because I'm working with so many different organizations in the community. I'm in the trenches, Ernie, I'm in the trenches for the last year, making this community better, empowering people, educating people. And so I want to say for the record, too, the amount of money we're talking about here at 0.5%, $58,000 that would go into the Parks and Rec Fund, that couldn't even build a bathroom, you know? That can't cut four parks' grass for the summertime. And you think it's going to fix your roads, taking another half a percent? Like, we're talking pennies here, you know? So, no, that money could be better spent. And Ernie, if you ever have a question on how much work I'm dedicating to this county, come on by my office, man, you know where it's at, you came on my first day.
Thank you, thank you. For the, also for the record, the point of this ordinance is entirely lost, that, you know, we're going to bring people to town, we want the town to look nice, you know? We want to make a good impression. I think, you know, like Jeanette says, after a year and looking at our budgeting process and coming up with planning, it would be a better time to talk about any changes we want to do with it. And that's my, that's my two cents on it. In that being the case, is there any further discussion on this before we take a vote?
I get the impression that the consensus is that the intention was good behind it, but I don't think any of us want to be tricky, the county needs more money than we already are, that perhaps it would not be of that idea to resurface a more dedicated approach to this whole issue.
Any other further discussion? With that, I'll entertain a vote, all in favor? Any opposed?
None.
More than failures. We'll move on to item five, council members, city clerk lead discussion for possible action, approval for the municipal utilities board and Ely City Council to participate in a special joint meeting in September or October for presentation by civilian first permits and Great Basin water managers.
The county just contacted by sending first permits from the Great Water Basin water manager. The presentation is scheduled for October 9th at the Alice Hall. So the county would like us to be present again. It was very beneficial last time, it's, we presented with the water, that's all we're saying.
With that, I'll entertain motion on this item.
I'll move to the previous president.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do we have any discussion on this item? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Good, so with that, we'll open it back up for public comment.
We've already left off, so. Ms. Mayor, from last meetings in the past, I want to bring up that Mr. St. Anthony's failed to finish the trip and get her around his home, he had an ordinance, pertains to everybody. Mr. Tony, the police councilman, has an interlocutor's pitch. I get cited, and the family get cited, and yet some people look the other way.
It's my backyard.
Pardon me?
It's my backyard.
Oh, so you're ready to look again. You can go back 15 feet and it's fine, but if you go around this area, you take your time. I know you're a busy man, you don't make all the meetings, but the ordinance is there, that isn't for that. Ernie, to Airbnb's mayor, maybe not the-
Not this meeting, okay.
Mr. Mayor, the Airbnb- Mr. Mayor, the, uh, Airbnbs are still in the business. I've asked for a list, I've not gotten anything, but yesterday Kyle brought me a picture of a roof. I know what it's at. Though if you're going to give me the location of a property, I'm used to jumping over roofs, but I don't need to jump over a person's roof to find out under that. These people continuously doing business in the city of Ely, in residential area. All I'm asking is, get a...